Ready? Okay. We're going to call to order. I'd like to call the meeting to order. This meeting is being held in the council chambers and is open for public attendance and participation. Can I have a roll call, please?
Chairperson Silman.
Here.
Vice Chairperson Brookman.
Here.
Commissioner Noor.
Here.
Commissioner Sandu.
Here.
Commissioner Dale. County Liaison Campbell.
All right, we're going to do the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. Would you do that with us, Stacy?
Sure.
You are welcome and encouraged to participate in this meeting. Public comment on items not listed on the agenda will be heard at this time. Comments on controversial items may be limited, and large groups are encouraged to select representatives to express opinions of the group. Members of the public submitting written requests at least 24 hours prior to the meeting will be normally allotted five minutes to speak. Do we have any written requests?
There are no written requests.
And do we have anybody from the public that wants to speak on any item that is not on the agenda tonight? Okay. Page two. So, do we have any comments from the public? We just said that. All right, so Planning Commission Business Agenda Modifications, do we have any? Nope. Okay. We're going to go on to the Consent Calendar. All matters listed under Consent Calendar are considered to be routine and can be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items prior to the time that the commission votes on the motion unless members of the Planning Commission request specific items to be discussed or removed from the consent calendar for individual action. Is there any public comment on Consent Calendar's items 2 through 4? Okay. Hearing none, I'm going to bring this back to the commission for comments or action. Okay, request a motion.
I make a motion to take action on the items on the consent calendar?
2, 3, and 4.
2, 3, and 4.
Second.
I will provide the second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. All right. So Minutes from May 28, 2025. Hopefully you've read them, and we have a... Can we get an approval for the minutes of May 28, 2025?
I'll make a motion.
Chair Silman, Consent Calendar items 2, 3, and 4 are approved as presented?
Yes.
So we can move on to the Agenda Item 5?
Oh, I'm sorry. You're right. Aren't you glad it's my last meeting? All right, so now we are on number six. All right. Or, sorry, 5. Consideration of Development Plan 2501 Garden Highway Self-Storage Located at 1478 Garden Highway. All right. Are you ready?
Yeah.
Okay.
Good evening, Commissioners. Today we'll be looking at Development Plan 25-01 Garden Highway Self-Storage, like you said. So this project is located at 1478 Garden Highway. What is proposed are 10 self-storage buildings and an office with an upstairs manager unit. The total building area is 124,398 square feet, and the project will be built out in two phases, and I'll get into that a little bit later. Here is the existing site, which is an auto repair shop with some outdoor storage. The parcel is exactly 5 acres and is in the light industrial zoning district, which permits self-storage facilities. The project requires planning commission review and approval as the project is over 50,000 square feet in building area. Here we have the site plan. You can see in the front, we have the proposed office and residence. Next to that is the parking for the site, as well as the main access gates. Secondary access will be at the southeast corner of the site, accessible by a 40-foot wide easement along the south side of the property. These buildings labeled 1 through 10 are the self-storage units. Going back to the two phases of this project, Phase 1 will involve completing Buildings 1 through 7 with the area where Buildings 8, 9, and 10 are being the RV and boat storage. We have also added a condition prohibiting the parking of commercial trucks, trailers, and tractors in this storage area and throughout the site. Phase 2 involves finishing the build-out of Buildings 8 through 10, and will be completed within 2 to 10 years, depending on how fast the units rent out. Looking at the compatibility with neighboring uses, we can see that the border of the project includes uses that are similar commercial and industrial uses. We have self-storage to the west, we have the sewer treatment plant, retail, and sports complex. Therefore, it's deemed compatible with the surrounding area. Here we can see the elevations for the office with the top-floor residential unit. The building includes design elements such as wrought iron fencing, as well as stone veneer around the base of the building. The stone veneer continues along the wall area for the self-storage units facing Garden Highway. These include elements of architectural interest, including a shaped cornice, cornice work, as well as patterns. I would also like to note that the signage shown here is not part of the application and not representative of the final product. Here we can see some of the landscaping along Garden Highway. This includes street trees and water-wise ground cover, as well as greening the mass of the storage units facing Garden Highway. For traffic and services, there are no anticipated impacts to traffic. Typically, self-storage units are low-traffic generators, and onsite parking is sufficient. Again, we've included the condition that no... The parking of commercial trucks, trailers, and tractors is prohibited, and all city services are available. In addition, staff have determined that the project qualifies for a categorical exemption pursuant to CEQA Guidelines Section 15332 Infill Development, and the below findings have been made. And the Planning Commission finds and recommends that the City Council find the following are required findings, and they must be made prior to approval of the project. This project doesn't go to City Council, so that's a mistake, sorry. And I can go over both the development plan findings and the CEQA findings if requested. So the recommendation we have before us tonight is to conduct a public hearing and make the necessary findings to adopt a resolution to determine the project is categorically exempt from CEQA pursuant to these guidelines, infill development, and approved development plan 25-1, subject to the conditions of approval, to allow the development of a facility with 10 self-storage buildings and an office with upstairs manager unit at 1478 Garden Highway. Any questions?
Andrew, just clarification. Is the commission taking final action on this, or is this actually a recommendation to the City Council?
Yes, this is final action.
Okay.
Not a recommendation.
Thank you. Okay, are there any questions from the Commissioners?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Being a repair lot, are there any soil contamination issues with the lot as it says?
Not... I don't know. Oh, we also have the applicant, John Mallon, representing the applicant here.
If you want to go to the mic, just since you're being recorded.
Yeah, I can hear you.
Oh, hit the button, sorry.
I believe when the applicant purchased the property roughly a year ago, they did a Phase 1, and I don't think anything came back from it, so.
All right, thank you.
Okay, any other? Okay. All right, I'm going to open for a public hearing. Are there any questions from the public? You good?
I'm fine, yeah, thank you.
Okay. All right, I'm going to close the public hearing, and I'm going to look... Request a motion. Anybody? Go for it.
Okay, I will make the motion to adopt a resolution to determine the project as categorically exempt from CEQA pursuant to CEQA Guidelines Section 15332 Infill Development, and approved development plan 25-01, subject to the conditions of approval, to allow the development of a facility with 10 self-storage buildings and an office with upstairs manager unit at 1478 Garden Highway, APN number 54-010-008.
Okay, is there a second?
I second that.
Thank you, Commissioner Noor. All right, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you very much. All right, we're going to go to number 6. Consideration of Zoning Code Amendment 2501 and Rezone 2502 Plumas Street Overlay District, and Doug Lippi will present.
Good evening, Commission. Okay, so this item, unlike the previous, being a zoning code amendment and a rezoning, so this is going to be a... Ultimately, you're not making a decision tonight, you're only making a recommendation to the City Council. So tonight you're considering these following components. You've got code revisions to provide for overlay districts in our zoning code, adopting what's called an X-28 district, establishing the downtown Plumas Street Overlay District prohibiting new tobacco and vape retailers and retail stores that sell beer, wine, and distilled spirits for off-premise consumption, consistent with a Type 20 or 21 ABC license, and then rezoning certain properties along Plumas, Forbes, Scott, and Sutter Streets from community commercial C2 to have the X-28 district added. So this came to the city's attention through correspondence provided to the city by the Downtown Business Association and the Blue Zones Project. So they made the request to the city for this to be considered. On May 20th, we took this forward to the City Council, and the council unanimously initiated this process, which has then led to our hearing tonight. So overlay districts, they're really just a planning tool. It allows you to put some additional requirements on certain properties that you may not want to apply citywide or jurisdiction-wide. And so the... In this sense, we're applying it to just properties along Plumas Street. And so when you look at the properties identified in yellow, that's the existing zoning C2 specific plan, and then the properties on the right, you would see we have the new X-28 overlay, and the same properties on either side of the map. So the devil's always in the details. So what does it tell us? Well, it tells us that the properties within the overlay would be within the Downtown Business Improvement District from Calusa Avenue, State Highway 20, to Bridge Street. We provide some definitions for a smoke shop and vape shop, and then we have the specific restrictions. So it would prohibit new smoke shops and vape shops. It would then prohibit new retail stores authorized to sell beer, wine, and distilled spirits under an ABC Type 20 or 21 license. An ABC Type 20 and 21 license, that's typically going to be your liquor store would be a Type 21. You could have a convenience store that maybe just sells beer and wine, that would be a Type 20. We did get some comments from the public, and we've had some communication with a neighbor who may have a desire to do wine tasting in the downtown area, and that would actually fall under a Type 20 license, the way ABC categorizes. So just wanted to make you aware of that. But it's important to recognize the city isn't trying to put anyone who currently has one of these businesses in the downtown area out of business. So that's why we include the non-conforming uses. So if there is a business today occurring there, and the rules change that would prohibit it, they can continue to operate. And as long as they continue to operate, they're good to go. If they stop, they cease operation for a period of one year or more, then they would kind of lose that grandfathered status. That's the way the city zoning code currently works. So, under environmental review, we determined that this type of proposal is exempt. We give the statutory section. And in a nutshell, we're limiting uses from what the base zoning already allows. So when you have fewer uses that would otherwise be able to occur, it's not going to create an impact on the environment. So it allows us to make that exemption from the California Environmental Quality Act. So we have a very long recommendation. I promise you, I will not read that to you. So, but we are asking that you conduct a public hearing and adopt a resolution, making the recommendation to the City Council for this item. And you would note that in your staff report, at the very end, we did have a letter provided by, and I apologize if I mispronounce it, Prima Vitae Resentis, opposing the item. There's not a great deal specifics as to why, but maybe if they're here tonight, they could explain that. We also have representatives from the Blue Zone Project and the Downtown Business Association who could also speak to this item. So happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioners, questions?
I have one. I don't know if staff can answer it, but I'm like thinking ahead. So if there's like a premium on, let's say there's... I know there's one for sure vape shop on Plumas, maybe there's more. But let's say you're that one owner, now you're kind of locked in as like the vape shop on Plumas. Can that owner sell that business to someone else as long as it stays open consecutively, or is there... Are there provisions in there to prevent that happening?
That's a great question. So under the non-conforming use chapter, it's not ownership-based, it's whether the use continues consecutively. So I own the vape shop, I sell it to you, you can continue to operate. As long as you don't have that cease and operation for 12... For one year or more.
One year, okay. I have a question. When you were talking about wine tasting, so if that business wants to come in and do wine tasting and does charcuterie trays or some type of food, is that going to be allowed?
No, that would actually end up being, I'm going to say, you might interpret that as collateral damage. You know, they... Just how the state classifies a Type 20 license, that would kind of rope them in.
Okay, so you have to be basically a restaurant?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
Restaurant or bar?
We'll wait until public comment, Carrie. I'll let you do it on public. Okay. All right, so I'm going to open this up for public comment, and do you want... Do you have a question, or do you want to... Carrie?
I'll pass, go ahead.
You sure?
Yeah.
Is there anybody here that would like to speak to? Go ahead, and turn the mic on, please.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Marnie Sanders, and I'm the Executive Director of Blue Zones Project. But I'm also here as a board member for the Downtown Business Association. I really appreciate the opportunity to come speak in support of this proposal that Doug just presented regarding the code amendment to create an overlay district for the Plumas Street corridor. We are really pleased about the council's supportive action back in May, and we appreciate the opportunity to continue to move this item forward for your consideration tonight. So Plumas Street, it's really in the heart of Yuba City, and I think it's well-liked by our entire community. But it's more than just a commercial area. It's really where people come to connect with their families and their friends. We've all been to some of the festivals down there. And so we just want to be really mindful as we plan for the future of the downtown. And so it's really important to be thoughtful about the land uses that contribute to that overall experience, and really promoting the safety and the identity of the corridor, and being very health and well-being forward. So we believe that limiting certain uses of types of retail, particularly those that are focused on tobacco and vaping products, is really essential to preserving a welcoming, walkable, and health-focused downtown. These uses are not in alignment with the environment that we want to cultivate for the residents, our visitors, and the local businesses. So creating this overlay allows the city to reinforce a really clear vision for what we want to see on Plumas Street, and one that prioritizes our community well-being and supports our local investment and honors that unique character of our downtown. So both the Downtown Business Association and Blue Zones Project, we're aligned in this support of this proposal, and we continue to be active partners in this effort. So thank you so much for your time and for your consideration.
Thank you. Is there anyone else I'd like to speak to? Please, go ahead and go to the mic. And state your name, please. No.
Is it on now?
Yes.
Okay, hello, my name is Shelley Darrow, and I own the building at 731 Plumas Street.
Hi, Stacy.
My husband and Stacy used to work together.
Oh.
At the Sheriff's Department. Anyway, that is 731 Plumas, which is known as the Tea Garden House. And my concern is, has there been a lot of problems at that smoke shop that I haven't heard about? And I think it's a little bit hypocritical to say you can't get a bottle of wine and take it home from this area when we have more bars in that section of town than I think any bloody place else. So I think if drinking was going to be a problem, we'd already know it. And if people are going to get a bottle and go home, it's not going to be a Plumas Street problem. I mean, we do have people that like to drink and camp out on the streets in my backyard, but they get their liquor, you know, from the gas station, from the 7-Eleven, and then they wander onto Plumas Street. So I don't see where telling people what you can and cannot do with your own property saying off-sale liquor. I wouldn't be able to sell wine, have a wine tasting, shop, whatever I want to do with that house. I wouldn't be able to do that. But you could absolutely go next door to the Viking and get a couple cans of cider or some of their fabulous beer to go. I mean, what's the difference? I think it's... I think you're kind of overreaching when you tell people, no, we don't want this in our area. I mean, vaping is not against the law. I mean, we have more problems with the homeless in front of the post office and places like that than hanging out in front of that vape shop. They seem to police themselves. They don't want people loitering out front. But I just think that you should take it into consideration, you know, before you decide to tell people, no, you can not do this in your business, in your property, because I don't even know what to call them, because a group of concerned citizens is worried about the environment or the public feelings downtown. Most people are afraid of the homeless. They're not worried about people buying a bottle of wine or going into the vape shop. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comment. Is there anybody else?
Okay, good evening, Council... Or, I'm sorry, this is Planning Commission. So good evening. I thought I was at a City Council meeting. I'm Sandy Drowne, and I am a board member for the Yuba City Downtown Business Association, and I also, with my husband, is the owner of the Happy Viking at beautiful downtown. So I was... Why we wanted to have this ordinance, and kind of we were working with Doug, was because of the importance of keeping the integrity. We've worked the last six years. The DBA meets every year with their strategic planning, and we work on like what kind of environment we want down there, what kind of things. And our biggest thing is, the mission is that we want to bring people downtown and be a family-friendly environment. And so when we were working with this, I think the biggest thing was the smoke shop that went in. And to talk to Shelley if there was any things that have happened, there's been a couple of break-ins at the smoke shop. So, and it brings down, since they've been there, I know the owners very well, great people, but it does bring down a different type of group down there as well, which we're not trying to create. And so as far as like the wine piece of that, I'm not sure if that can be something to be considered, but I do know with the vape and the grocery stores as well, like a grocery little convenience store would hurt the integrity of our downtown and what we've built and worked so hard for the last six years. So that would be where I just wanted to stress that that would be my concern, and that's why I like this ordinance.
Okay, thank you, Sandy. Anybody else? All right. Mr. Campbell, do you want to say anything? Do you want to have any comments? We certainly have.
I would just like to add that understanding what the intent is of the Blue Zone and the Downtown Business Association, just having returned from a ride to Winters, has anybody been to Winters in the last three to six months? What an amazing job they've done with our Old Town District in accomplishing exactly what it is you're talking about doing, and making it not only a draw for the local community, but also a destination for outside communities to come down and enjoy that historic... What's the word I'm looking for? Certainly not eclectic, but I think you know what I'm talking about in terms of an overall feeling you go when you go there. And if I may address your comment about trying to tell people what they can and cannot do with their property, that's the entire purpose of a general plan and zoning ordinance, to establish uses in any given area within the boundaries of the jurisdiction, whether it be the city or the county, to identify what land uses are compatible. So it's not so much an issue of telling people willy-nilly what they can and can't do, it's what's consistent with what they're trying, what the city and local business organizations are trying to accomplish in creating in terms of an environment. So that's really the only difference, I think, in terms of what's being proposed. And then I just had a question, and for something that maybe the city would want to consider, and that is, and thank you for asking the question, about how long it can be dormant before it's nixed. But is there a possibility to truncate that time period from a year to say maybe six months? I mean, a year just seems...
That would be a separate code change.
Yeah, it would be a change. Right, code change? Yeah.
Yeah, it would be a separate amendment. It's not part of the package being considered tonight.
I just think that's something the city might want to consider, given what you're trying to accomplish, and to have a building that was a vape shop or whatever it was sit empty for a year really doesn't lend itself to helping create that environment. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
I hope that was helpful, and thank you.
Appreciate it, okay. All right, I'm going to close the public hearing. I guess I do have one question, and I agree about the vape shop, and I agree about, you know, the selling of the beer on the street. I guess I'm still a little waffly on the wine tasting, so there's just no way. It has... It's like black and white, and like you said, that's just throwing the baby out. I'm just... Because to me, that would lend something nice, you know, if he had something. But we're only making a recommendation, so it's not like we're changing the world, but the council needs...
You are making recommendations.
To the council.
Tailor your recommendation to the council in that you could recommend that we not include Type 20 uses.
Or maybe it's more, you know, if you're going to do wine, it has to have with food or, you know, just something, I don't know.
Being a kind of planner by nature.
Yeah.
And so with the City Attorney's Office, we kind of had an offline conversation. We talked about the idea of, well, if we wanted to come up with some type of definition, not necessarily here, but it could just be your recommendation for, and I'm just going to use the kind of generic term of a wine store, right, that could allow certain things. And we could come up with that definition and provide that to the City Council as part of that recommendation. So that's certainly open for your consideration.
Okay. All right, so at this point, we're requesting a motion for the... To take the recommendation. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see you.
Could you remove a building from that overlay district, like Ms. Darrow's building, since that's an event center?
Oh, okay. That's good to know.
Technically, to answer your question directly, yes, you... Technically, to answer your question directly, yes, you could. It's not recommended, because then you kind of create a hole in the overlay. So...
Right. Okay. And again, this is just a recommendation from the Planning Commission to the City Council.
That's correct.
Okay. Well, if I can put that in, I really feel like that would... Again, I like the idea of, if you want to go down and do some wine tasting, they have something to eat, to do something like that. But that would just be my only thing. I definitely am... Yeah. I mean, so I don't know if you want me to make... Does anybody want to make a recommendation? I would like to add that. Yeah. Yeah. Because I don't want to take away from what Blue Zones in the downtown.
You can make a motion for the recommended action to include an amendment to add the potential for wine tasting, including provisions such as a wine store or similar use.
Yeah. But I don't want it to be an off-sale wine store. So I guess that's... I know, it's like, you know... I know, it's tough. Or we could just let the council figure it out. All right. Thanks. All right. Are we ready to... Okay. All right. So let's take a custom motion to move a recommendation to the council.
Sorry. I make a motion to make a recommendation to adopt a resolution of the Planning Commission of the U of City of Yuba City, recommending the City Council find the project is not subject to environmental review pursuant to CEQA Guidelines, Section 15061b3, and recommending the City Council approve zoning code amendment 25-01 and rezoning 25-02, revising Title 8, Chapter 5, Article 38 of the Municipal Code, to provide for overlay districts, adoption of an X-28 district, establishing the downtown Plumas Street Overlay District to prohibit new tobacco and vape retailers, as well as retail stores authorized to sell beer, wine, and distilled spirits for consumption off premises, consistent with the California Department of Alcoholic Beverage Control Type 20 or 21 License, and rezoning certain properties along Plumas Street, Forbes Avenue, Scott Street, Sander Street, from Community Commercial District C-2, Specific Plan C-2SP to C-2-X28-SP.
And I'll second that vote. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you. Thanks for coming out tonight. Thank you for coming, too. All right. We're going to future agenda items. Jaspreet? Oh, there you are.
Here I am. Good evening. And so for our future agenda items, for the August 13th Planning Commission meeting, we will be doing a training workshop. And so that's going to be with Placeworks, who is our consultant for our new planning commissioners. And then we are planning on bringing two new subdivisions. Most likely, it'll be in September. So we have our tentative subdivision map 2404, our Elmer West. So that's going to be for 53 new single-family lots located on the west side of Elmer Road. And then we have our tentative subdivision map 2501, which is the Ridge Estates, and that's for 139 new single-family lots just west of El Margarita. And then, I'm kind of stealing the thunder from Doug here, but we are also working on an updated central city-specific plan. So in October, we are planning on doing a special workshop, so with City Council and Planning Commission, to hold a workshop, kind of go over what the goal is, what updates that we would like to propose in the new plan. And then I will just take a moment to say thank you all so much. It's truly been a pleasure, and I will miss working with most of you. But, you know... Yeah. With most. Vice Chairman Brookman, we're glad to still have you, as well as Mr. Campbell. So it's been a pleasure, and I hope our paths cross here soon again. So thank you.
Thank you. All right. Mr. Libby? Do you have any updates? That you want to share with one person?
No, just kind of echoing what Jaspreet said. I guess first, I just want to say thank you. Because it's not everyone wants to volunteer their time on a Wednesday night to come down and sit and conduct public hearings, right? And talk about zoning. It's not necessarily the most exciting thing on a Wednesday night. So you pretty much dedicate your time to reading the reports, to coming to the meetings, making the decisions, listening to your fellow citizens. And that's a big deal. That's an important part of why this whole process works. And so we can't do it without you. And so Jackie and I have served together for the longest time, for when I was over at the county and then here at the city. Jackie, it's been a pleasure. I hope I get to work with you again. And some of our newer planning commissioners that are going to be departing, you guys have been great, and you guys have been really quick to learn. And I'm really going to miss having you on the commission, because I think we have had a really good commission to work with. So you will be missed. So just adding on to what Jaspreet said. She talked about our downtown specific plan. We're going to be doing updates. We're going to be doing a lot of community outreach for that. So we'll be engaging and coordinating with the Downtown Business Association with that. But I also want to talk about kind of bigger picture. So remember back in January, the commission, or actually December, you made a recommendation for approval of our 2040 general plan. That went to the City Council in January and was adopted. So that kind of lays the groundwork for the next period of time. Well, that kind of gets us started. It kind of lays the foundation. Well, now we're taking it to the next level. So we're going to be starting with, in the next several months, with a comprehensive overhaul of our zoning code. If you look at the zoning code today, I'm just going to say it's a patchwork of various updates and code changes dating back to the 1980s. And kind of internally with staff, I've said the 1980s have called. They'd like their zoning code back. And so this is really an opportunity for... Because it doesn't happen all the time. You basically do it, if you're lucky, once a generation. I was lucky to be able to be a part of the code update over at the county. Well, this is now time for us to re-envision our zoning code. We're not looking at changing the rules. If the standard works for us today, great, we'll keep it. But if things have been creating problems on the public side or we identify it, well, let's fix it. This is really the opportunity to take a good look at what we want our zoning to look like for the next generation. So I'm excited to say we're going to be undertaking that, and that's probably going to be probably a two-year process. We're going to have a lot of input with both the public, as well as the Planning Commission and the City Council, to make sure we get that right before we bring it forward for final adoption. So that would be my comments. And again, just thank you very much.
Excellent. Thank you. All right. Sutter County Liaison, do you have anything from the county?
From the county's perspective, no. It's been quite some time since we've had a meeting, so I don't have any updates for you there. I would just like to echo what's been said here tonight. Having the pleasure of serving on both Sutter County and previously serving as a commissioner for the city prior to the change, it has been an honor, especially with some of the new commissioners that came in and how quickly you did pick it up. It may not be rocket science, but there's some layers and depths and things you have to pick up to make good, solid decisions for the community. And you guys have done an excellent job. So wish you all the best. You'll be missed. And I already feel like we're separated, because now I'm down here at the end.
Don't worry. They'll be filling it in.
But that's it. And thank you. And best of luck in the future.
Thank you.
And congratulations, Doug.
Yes. Okay. Commissioners have anything to say? You're good? Well, I just want to say, too, I echo that. So I served six years with Sutter County and with Doug, and then four years here for the city, plus being the city clerk. And it's been a joy. But it is time, and I'm happy for that. I'm not leaving. I'm not going anywhere. I'm still going to be here. But it really is... And I really encourage people. I was so happy to see Ruby and Jimmy step up, because it is...